Chair Cruz, we're just waiting for Commissioners Alvarez and Stunbar Wesley. prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us again prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us Thank you All right Item number two is Commissioner Reports does anybody have anything live up to report Okay All right Moving right along then Executive Director Report with our interim Executive Director Shay Flaherty Batine welcome
Thank you Chair Cruz we got quite a bit to get through today with new staff and a few updates and a recap of our work this year so I'll just dive straight in Want to start with a huge appreciation for you our board for joining us at our annual Board Retreat last week You know the the name of the the theme of the day was definitely transition both of the city and Prosper's would begin to search both for a new Executive Director And onboarding our new council and mayor elect Wilson It's also productive I just think to use that time and thinking about our role around championing recovery While maintaining our core mission and focus on equitable prosperity across the city It was so important to have that time together in person to be candid about the challenges and opportunities ahead So I appreciate all of you leaning in providing your expertise and perspectives throughout the day Here today dressed in festive wear along with a lot of the folks around the office today who are wearing festive Wear to celebrate the holidays we had a meatball cook off interlude at lunch to celebrate the holidays it was fabulous we have a lot of talented chefs here at the agency But recognizing that this is a busy time of the year I want to mention a few large events that have been held by our office events and film that have been leading Late November wrapped up with the last edition of fifteenth edition of My People's Market the most recent The market included one hundred and fifty vendors over multiple days with average visitor attendance of four thousand people per day Which is pretty incredible The Portland Winter Ice Rink has returned for another season after a very successful year last year We have themed events happening throughout the week there's a different theme throughout the week all the way through January fifth we have an extended season this year I encourage everybody to see the winter ice rink pdx.com if you put that into your web browser for more information I also want to invite everybody to come out and join us for the first time ever first of its kind in downtown Portland this New Year's Eve Our team has worked with both the city of Portland and Pioneer Courthouse Square to produce Portland's first drone show in the square this New Year's Eve There's going to be two shows nine PM midnight featuring two hundred and fifty drones in the night sky So addition to the drone show there's going to be a dance party in the square lots of good food and drinks and I hope To hope to see you there either at nine for those of you that aren't staying up all night and for those of you who can stay up a little light later please join us at the midnight show as well There's going to be three these three amazing events as well as a lot of the other work that the event and films team has been leading around activations I want to thank them as well as their partners so Burke Nelson Manda Park Elise Taylor Nestle and Jessica Thompson Lisa Norwood and Yumen Elgato thank you for all your work at organizing these activations and really making our city a more vibrant place These events many others are happening throughout the city and I think they're an important part of just welcoming Our neighbors both across region and folks who just haven't been downtown while welcoming back into the central city and that's a core part Of for us rebuilding the reputation of Portland and the central cities recovery so appreciate the team for your tireless work there We also recently learned that a collaborative project that prosper Portland has worked on was awarded second place And this was for the Clean Industry Initiative they received second place from the Department of Energy At the Community Energy Innovation Summit in Chicago this year That group received an hundred thousand dollar prize to jumpstart an industrial symbiosis ecosystem along Portland's Columbia Corridor Which is the largest industrial area here in Oregon Industrial symbiosis for those of you not familiar is a circular economy model that reduces emissions and waste while supporting Energy efficiency and organizational resilience The prize is recognition of the team's success over the over the past year and in the future The money's going to go towards implementing several industrial symbiosis projects within the Portland area This is a public and private collaboration with our Bureau of Planning and Sustainability Prosper Portland Corky Collier of the Columbia Corridor Association and Alondo Simpson from City of Roses Recycling There's also additional support provided by OSU PSU Energy 350 and Work Systems Inc On this same track and stemming from a lot of the same collaborations we received great news that the Portland Clean Energy Fund Has awarded Prosper Portland significant funds around two major projects First is the Bureau of Planning Sustainability received twenty million of a grant from PSEF For the same Clean Industry Hub that has been championing so much of this work and many of you recall Prosper Portland staff as well as elected officials in the city And industry leaders have attended trips to Denmark in the past to study these different models And so this grant for twenty million enables the team to do business outreach to administer grants specifically for Employers that are doing industrial decarbonization projects over the next five years So that includes BPS Portland State Portland Metro Chamber neighbors for clean air energy 350 and work systems Internally on our real estate team the Broadway Corridor team received thirty six million dollars for several critical projects on the site Were this key sponsor for two main initiatives Constructing Hope in Oregon Tradeswomen are going to be receiving two point five million to double their capacity and workforce training programming The increased capacity enables training for an estimated two hundred and twenty individuals throughout the year participants earning Industry recognized credentials to ensure they are prepared for climate focused construction jobs In areas like energy efficiency green infrastructure and renewable energy Second Construction Hope and Oregon Tradeswomen have held leadership roles in the Broadway Corridor Labor Management Oversight Committee that's the LM COC and we are excited about the continued partnership there to ensure investments in this neighborhood benefit a broad range of Portlanders Related is receiving thirty three point five million dollars for net zero middle income housing development that's happening in parcel six of the Broadway Corridor project Deliver an estimated two hundred and thirty units of housing It'll be one of the two buildings in this new neighborhood alongside an affordable housing development that is being sponsored by the Portland Housing Bureau This project's also setting a new standard of energy efficiency high rise and it'll be one of the first Net zero developments of its kind so very excited by that Team is working to put funding agreements in place and initiate due diligence on both of those projects in the new year Finally given that this is our last meeting of two thousand and twenty four I want to take a moment to acknowledge what we've done and just Very rapid pace some of the outstanding work that we've done this year on behalf of the city of Portland its residents Everything from TIF exploration the Daimler Truck Expansion Plan and all of these are things that you have supported us with so huge appreciation to you as our board The the work on Broadway Corridor under demolition the Omsi Master Plan All the work we've done around business retention for key employers the ice rink and that's just a few of them All of these significant milestones are happening because of your leadership our extremely talented team here at Prosper Portland And the amazing array of public private nonprofit partners that we have the great honor of working with every day And recognizing that twenty twenty five is going to be a year full of new experiences transitions and probably some surprises I want to say how grateful I am to work with such a committed group of colleagues who share a focus on building an equitable economy And really care deeply about the vibrancy of Portland So now I also have the great honor this is one of the the best parts of this job is that I get to introduce you all to some of our new staff You also might recognize some familiar faces who have taken on new responsibilities inside Prosper Portland But to start on the new staff side I think you see folks joining on screen now So first I want to recognize Angela Rico Angela Rico gives me great pleasure to announce that that Angela has joined the policy team As our very first ever Prosper Portland Policy Analyst within government relations It's a new role for the agency and Angela's going to support Prosper Portland's political strategy Manage our agency's relationship with the new city hall electeds of which there are twelve And for the next few months she's going to be supporting Deputy City Administrator Donny Oliveta As he leads the Community Economic Development Service area so we'll be seeing Angela once a week while she spends a lot of her time In Portland building and city hall Many of you know Angela from a recent service as a senior policy advisor to the Always amazing City Commissioner Carmen Rubio Serving as a city council liaison to Prosper Portland travel Portland and the visitors of Development Fund Board Before joining Commissioner Rubio's team Angela served as a deputy district attorney prosecuting domestic domestic violence cases in Olomah County She's also worked in other policy and legal roles including for the Office of Governor John Kitzaber The Oregon Higher Education Coordinating Commission the Office of Attorney General Ellen Rosenblum And the United States Magistrate Judge John V Acosta Angela's a graduate from the University of Oregon School of Law and from Portland State University Your spare time Angela enjoys cooking dancing exploring the outdoors with her wife Erin and their two dogs Luca and Nico Second very pleased to announce that Jeff Lamont who has also joined us here on screen with an amazing holiday Is that a pug Jeff it's incredible has joined us as the agency's oh it's a great dog it's fantastic
Labrador
As the Prosper's new Director of Human Resources Jeff is a seasoned HR Director with over nineteen years in public service twelve years in different managerial roles Recently served as HR Director at the states state of Oregon's Oregon Liquor Cannabis Commission and the Oregon State Board of Nursing Jeff has successfully led initiatives that have transformed workplace culture and optimized talent management practices In addition to his HR it's for TV he brings a wealth of managerial experience that enhances His ability to lead diverse teams effectively such as the teams we have here at Prosper Jeff holds a degree in psychology served six years in the United States Air Force where he's deployed in Iraq Saudi Arabia New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina and various operation enduring freedom support missions around the globe In two thousand and nine while deployed to Iraq Jeff was promoted and successfully led a squadron of over thirty personnel through extremely hostile environments And Jeff still believes in the USA Air Force core values of integrity first service before self and excellence in all we do So thank you Jeff excited to have you on the team Now on to some some internal shifts and some familiar faces Dan Ruhan Dan recently transitioned from a limited term employee position on the entrepreneurship Economic Development Team to now joining us full time within the new Office of Small Business Where she'll be one of the Office of Small Business Liaisons Dan's played a critical role as a point person in all things related to the Portland Small Business Hub website over the past three years Is a key program for us over the pandemic Moving forward she'll continue to do so as the point person for the Office of Small Business Website which is launching in early two thousand and twenty five In this role she's going to be helping us triage and navigate small business inquiries providing a key link to the support we provide to the small business community congrats Dan Second I'd like to recognize Faith Aiken who's also had an internal transition and joining the Business Advancement Team in the Economic Development Department In her new role as Project Manager of Economic Incentives and Partnerships She's supporting the team with oversight of one of our key incentive programs if not the most important incentive program we have in economic development which is The Enterprise Zone the E-zone Also be supporting Oregon Manufacturing Extension Program Contract that's where our long-term partnership with OMEP And the development and collection of the team's impact metrics she's going to play a critical role In delivering on our contributions to advance Portland propelling inclusive economic growth and connecting Portlanders to high quality jobs Previously Faith had been on the policy team at Prosper Portland since two thousand and nineteen In the role of Program Outcomes Analyst where she supported our agency on reporting and metrics Faith will remain serving in her role as the ASME thirty seven sixty nine president And in her free time Faith enjoys lounging on zero gravity recliners playing cozy video games designed for kids I think that's a lovely lovely thing Faith going into the holidays Brad I want to I want to say thank you Brad and I'm pleased to announce that Brad has accepted the role of Lead Accountant In his new role Brad Reynolds will be leading the internal accounting functions that include vendor management accounts payable accounts receivable Fixed assets payroll accounting and financial reporting and auditing no small task thank you Brad As part of this work Brad's going to be coordinating within the team and across the agency as we review and update accounting related procedures and training Last but certainly not least I want to appreciate Courtney Kong is also here on screen with us In great news for the finance team Courtney has accepted the role of interim Principal Budget Analyst In her role Courtney's going to be helping lead the budget process which is again is a brand new budget process with a new council new city structure Across the agency and supporting the development of our fiscal year twenty five twenty six budget As well as ongoing management of the twenty four twenty five budget in addition to All of her usual work supporting the Economic Development Department All things related to general fund the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we receive and other citywide funds that we coordinate such as cannabis Well thanks for your patience so all that was a lot and that concludes my remarks
Great thank you so much for that great report and Welcome and congratulations to everybody just super excited to have everyone in place and Really happy for all of you and grateful that you're all here it's it's terrific to have such an amazing staff And I know the rest of the board feels exactly the same way so thank you So next up we have meeting minutes would somebody like to make a motion to approve the November thirteenth minutes
I can move
Oh great thank you we have a second
Yeah my second
Thank you all right all those in favor please say aye
Aye
Okay once you're approved All right next up we have public comment for items not on the agenda Pam do we have anybody here for public comment
None provided thank you
Okay thank you Okay so One more reminder about public comment You can use that email that I mentioned earlier prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us if you'd like to make public comments so for anybody listening out there who might want to Okay next up we just have one agenda item today so short and sweet This is an action item adopting budget amendment number two for the fiscal year beginning July one two thousand and twenty four and ending July June thirty two thousand and twenty five And making appropriations and Tony Barnes and Courtney Cone will present
Good afternoon Chair Cruz and Commissioners and Executive Director Flair T Batine I'm Tony Barnes Chief Financial Officer at Prosper Portland today I'm joined by Courtney Cone Principal Budget Analyst who was just introduced Today we'll be introducing fiscal year number twenty four twenty five budget revision number two it's the second budget revision of the fiscal year And not the last but we want to provide a quick update on where we are in the budget year as well as some of the key shifts That are established in Exhibit A Of the resolution And let's move to the next slide please So there's four key components of this budget revision It's one to update our final beginning fund balances following the completion of the fiscal year twenty Three twenty four audited financial statements We had most of those updates completed in the first budget revision but there were a few other adjustments we were waiting on so we're incorporating those True ups in this budget revision The most of the changes include updates to project and program forecasted expenditures based on timing of projects but As we'll illustrate in a couple slides and Courtney will walk through some of the key changes As well as the creation of the new community investment fund that will support some grant programs In recently amended tax increment districts where those TIF districts dollars are no longer available but we have some additional resources available There's some administrative budget adjustments as well as incorporating changes from city council from the fall budget amendment that occurred In in November based on prior year Carryover of committed dollars Next slide please So as a as a recap to the purpose of this Of this action Staff bring several budget revisions known as supplemental budgets to the commission during the fiscal year to recognize changes in both resources And adjustments to project and program expenditures Oregon State Budget Law requires any changes to the budget that results in an increase in expenditure Of appropriations by fund to be approved by the governing body Prosper's financial structure Includes the appropriation categories of administration economic development infrastructure housing and property development Each category includes many projects and programs that roll up to these larger appropriation categories So our practice is to review expenditures during the fiscal year with project managers And managers and roll up these requested changes true up budgets and and bring them in a comprehensive budget supplemental budget And those changes are identified in exhibit A attached to the resolution as described This may include reductions to expenditures to align our formal budget to the forecast but also Increases where there's some additional funding Next slide please To recap where we are in the fiscal year this provides a high level schedule of where we are in June the budget was adopted In August we completed revised one which updated our SIF and some very specific Tax Increment Action Plan adjustments that were needed since there were some projects that were moving forward at that time We are in December with the second revised budget which is comprehensive mid-year adjustment And through January and March April and May we'll continue to review resources and expenditures And we'll be bringing probably a final budget revision before we close out the year just to make sure that we're on target with spending for the fiscal year Next slide please Also as a high level recap of where we are in the fiscal year this slide highlights some spending and related activity for the first half of the fiscal year We're on track with our operating budget spending about thirty five percent of the budget In operations through November with some slight savings related to some positions that are still under recruitment That'll be filled over the following months the total TIF district spending totals about thirty seven million dollars in loan grant and real estate investments Notably loans like the Falcon Building casket building loans Are moving through those expenditures also the Williams and Russell Project Incorporated there About fifteen million dollars in non-TIF expenditures that have made so far this is also on track with budget For citywide economic development and lending activity Incorporating these numbers are new grants and loans made so far this fiscal year through September thirtieth Spend about a hundred and sixty new grants approved for six million dollars And three new loans for about five million dollars and those dollars aren't all spent But we'll be spending through the fiscal year and we anticipate higher expenditures too As additional loans and grants are made during the fiscal year Next slide please So I'll be covering the total changes in budgeted resources on this slide This is a roll up of all the different funds included in exhibit A before I hand it over to Courtney to talk about Total expenditures and some of the key changes in expenditures In total resources increased by twenty four million dollars nine million dollars is due to final trueups to beginning fund balance This is mostly in our terminating and sunsetting TIF districts based on our audited financial statements Our general fund increases by about three point one million dollars based on carryover of prior year commitments Resources allocated by city council Courtney will talk about some of those expenditures in the next few slides Interest on investments are updated to increase three point five million dollars Based on the updated forecast for interest rates and timing of major project disbursements Most of this cash is an offset to some ongoing real estate holding costs as well as supporting any potential cost increases for these projects In later years so it's hope we're hanging on to those resources and then the respective funds to help fund Those projects in future years Property income includes some decreases in revenue you see a net increase here of about one point two million dollars That includes some reductions on assumptions for in a convention center and several of the garages But it is offset by some property sales so there's a net change of one point two million dollars Those property sales are primarily related to transactions disposing properties Related to development in Lent's and also Some final properties of the Alderman Lent's Miscellaneous includes mostly the addition of projected ticket sale revenue related to the ice rink And finally transfers you will note here transfers of four point seven million dollars Represents the repayment mostly the repayment of prior year short term interfund loans To cover cash flow requirements for these operating type agreements we have with the city However there's also a million dollar transfer in here From the Strategic Investment Fund to the General Operating Fund That aligns with the Financial Sustainability Plan forecast to transfer some of those resources to the general fund To support operations we're going to be waiting kind of mid-year each year to review those Reprogress and loan collections in the Strategic Investment Fund before making those transfers And feel confident that we can include that in the budget now at this point That is a summary of changes in resources and I will hand it over to Courtney for expenditures
Great thank you Tony Good afternoon everyone So total expenditures Change they decreased by twenty five million This includes several projects that have moved out to future years Specifically for the Portland Housing Bureau in various TIF districts and loans and the Strategic Investment Fund I'll discuss those some of those key changes in the next few slides Total transfers matches what Tony just discussed in the revenue slide and the previous slide Mainly This increases due to the year end interfund loans And then contingency increased by forty four million because of the increase in revenue assumptions And then the decrease in expenditure assumptions This will help with planning and budget development for the twenty five twenty six fiscal year Because these will all move over to the beginning fund balance for next year And next slide please Justin Okay the administration appropriation increased a net five hundred and seventy five seventy thousand Human Resources added funds necessary for recruiting and to backfill for HR vacancies IT projects are being funded with prior year savings That align with the agency work plan these projects include improved data and reporting tools Building out the vendor portal and conference room improvements The housing appropriation line item decreased by eleven million The Portland Housing Bureau has moved Out the housing set aside expenditures for interstate and Lent's to future fiscal years River District also decreased by one point seven million Which allows for PHB to use program income which um, allows for PHB to use program income from an old federal grant to support the housing set-aside in exchange for additional funds going toward Broadway corridor. Yes. Commissioner, tell me my request, Lee. Yes.
One slide. I guess I was, I just had questions. I just want a little bit more information on why the increase of forty-four thousand was forty-four thousand?
Uh, forty-four million on the contingency, is that? Yeah. Um, great, yeah. So, um, uh, let me look back at the revenues. Our revenues increased quite a bit, um, so that essentially because of the difference between our revenues and expenditures. Um, that's, everything else goes into contingency, so um, because of the increase in revenues and then the decrease in expenditures, um, our contingency kind of ballooned, and we'll be using those funds in future fiscal years. Does that make sense?
Is that for the next two years?
Uh, it's programmed out, I think, for a few of the fiscal years, the forecast years.
Okay, and so the property redevelopment going down, is that sixteen million?
Yes.
Why was that?
Yeah, yeah. I'll actually talk about that in a couple of slides.
I, I guess I'm just, it's uh, a lot of money in the coin that we're doing, so I'm just like, why the big discrepancies? But maybe they're not discrepancies, but maybe we just I mean, the why behind it all.
Yeah, definitely.
But I'll, I'll just keep quiet. I'll listen a little bit more. Sorry.
No, thank, thank you for the questions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll circle back to um, kind of the high-level um, discussion around this on, on the Ebb and Flow of Projects. Um, so maybe Courtney can walk through the next couple of slides and, and we can recap, um, you know, what we anticipate these dollars being spent on over the next few years.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Um, okay, so economic development appropriation increased by about two million dollars. Um, the increase includes the city fall budget monitoring process or budget revision, uh, which carried over eight hundred and twenty thousand in funding for the um, recreational cannabis tax fund. Um, uh, these ones are for the Social Equity and Economic Development Grant Program and for the Reimagine Oregon Economic Development Grants. Um, general fund also carried over um, economic development funds uh, about a hundred thousand for the East Portland Tiff Exploration and two hundred and seventy-five thousand in repair grants. Um, these ones were all contracted last fiscal year, so um, it's just carrying over the budget from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, and including that in our contract with the City Budget Office. Um, the renamed Community Investment Fund, um, we'll get into that a little bit more, but um, carried over the remaining strategic retention funds for the Business Advancement Team. Um, this is about one point one million, um, and it's meant to assist um, uh, companies with staying or expanding in Portland, uh, retaining local quality jobs. Um, a large portion of these funds are earmarked for Daimler's Electric Truck Training Facility. Um, as you all may remember, approving a while back. Um, uh, also in this fund are the uh, projected um, sales and expenditures from uh, the Winter Ice Rink and uh, My People's Market sponsorships. Uh, there's also a decrease in River Districts, um, by about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, leaving about a million on the table for business loans in River District. Next slide, please. Okay, and hopefully this answers some questions about um, the property redevelopment line. Um, so, property redevelopment appropriation decreased by seventeen million. The largest decrease moved twenty million to forecast years in the Strategic Investment Fund for property pre-development. Um, the Cultural Business Hub also moved some funds to next fiscal year in Interstate Tiff District. That was about three million. Um, and the workshop blocks moved um, environmental costs uh, to next fiscal year in Central East Side, also about three million. Um, property management revenues and expenditures were updated also, which uh, resulted in a decrease. Um, sorry. Results generated uh, increase in revenues um, in property income, and then um, which was as Tony mentioned, was primarily due to property sales. Um, and then uh, an increase in expenditures by about sixty thousand dollars. Some of the larger increases include the Convention Center Garage, um, about a hundred and forty-five thousand, which was partially offset by revenue. Um, Lent's Commons, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, also offset by revenue. Um, Union Station increased by about three hundred and thirty thousand, and we added the Fairfield Property, which increased, or which added three hundred, about three hundred fifty thousand. Um, we also saw increases in the Old Town Action Plan, um, and the North, North McAdam Commercial Property Loan Fund. Uh, for property redevelopment appropriation, we carried over one point nine million in general fund for uh, the Fairfield Acquisition, um, which closes this month. Um, the Community Investment Fund was created to support the Central East Side and Lent's businesses with PIP grants due to the changes in TIF district boundaries. Um, so this revision adds four hundred and fifty thousand for uh, that purpose this fiscal year. And I think that wraps up my slides, but I'm happy to answer any more question.
Um, thanks, Courtney. To kind of circle back on the, the overall change in contingency, uh, forty-four million dollars, um, that will be spent, I anticipate to be spent down over the next few years. Most of that change is within the Strategic Investment Fund, as, as Courtney um, discussed on some of the slides. Uh, both from a beginning fund balance increase, recognizing what total cash is actually available at the beginning of this year, as well as um, what we're planning to spend this year. The original budget for the Strategic Investment Fund was approximately thirty-five million dollars. Um, this year, most of the decreases um, in the budget are, are there in pushing those dollars to future fiscal years. And that combined impact of uh, recognizing that higher balance and um, the lower expenditures um, results in most of that increase in contingency. So, that contingency really is living in that Strategic Investment Fund. If opportunities, uh, lending opportunities um, move forward quicker this fiscal year than anticipated, we might see an adjustment increasing that back in our revised budget for this fiscal year. But most likely, we'll see those dollars um, incorporated into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget um, base budget for next year. Um, the Strategic Investment Fund is very flexible um, in when the dollars could be spent, um, but um, it'll be applied to um, the best forecast we have at the time. And uh, right now, we're, we're decreasing that budget to really provide a kind of the best uh, indicator of what resources we'll start next fiscal year within that fund. And I think in total, just to provide a little bit more summary on the Strategic Investment Fund, there's approximately in total, with all the revisions, fifty-three million dollars available for investment, and the revised budget after these decreases um, has a budget around twenty-two million dollars this year uh, for spending. Um, in context, we spent around ten million dollars last fiscal year for the Strategic Investment Fund. So, we feel that the twenty twenty-two million dollars is a good approximate amount, um, with some balance of appropriation for uh, lending to occur through June thirtieth of this year. And that would leave uh, thirty-eight million dollars in the Strategic Investment Fund for lending next year in the year beyond, years beyond.
Okay, great. Does anybody have uh, any questions? Comments? Okay. Um, like every, everybody's completely clear on the adjustments. It's uh, every, every, uh, every cycle we go through this, you know, it's uh, kind of interesting because things tend to move around a fair bit. Uh, so, we appreciate you walking through all that with us, and um, there may be further questions and comments later. But uh, but great job on kind of whittling it down for us to understand. So, thank you. Okay, uh, if nobody has any further questions or comments, then would somebody like to make a motion to approve budget amendment number two? That was resolution number seven, five, nine, zero.
I can move.
Thank you. You have a second?
I second.
Great. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. So, thanks again. I really appreciate the, the summary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um, are there any further comments? Uh, anybody want to say anything about the holidays or add anything else to our meeting today?
Hey, um, it's been a great year. I appreciate you all, and have a happy, wonderful holiday season.
Indeed. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Okay, thanks. Well, happy holidays to everybody. Thanks to all of you for your great work, and uh, thanks to uh, our fellow board members for all of your uh, input and advice and wisdom. So, uh, thanks to everyone. And there being no further items on the agenda, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Take care, everybody.